Right, good evening members. Welcome to this extraordinary meeting of the town council. It's in relation to one item only and that is the customs house. Sorry, no it's not. That's in relation to, oh no, I know, to Bradford House, or customs house on the brain. And just so, before we start, can I ask you to just turn off your mobile phones? Because I haven't done that either. And... To get that done. No, we're never going off. And welcome to any residents who are watching on our live stream. And the first item on the agenda is apologies. We have apologies from councillor Crittenden, councillor Green, councillor Heatherington, councillor Stuart Piper.
And councillor Ara.
Are there any, item two, any declarations of interest? Thank you. Item three, Bradford House. This is to do with the design brief. And I'll pass over to the chair of Bradford House, councillor Nixon.
Thank you. Just before I start with this, I'm just going to give you an update so you know where we are. Because of course we've started the whole meanwhile use. So fill you in on a few things while I've got an opportunity. So Susie Humphries has been re-employed to do the meanwhile uses, going great guns. I'm very pleased to say that we have our first tenant institute, which means money has come into council from rent. So they know that they're there for October and so on and so forth, this meanwhile use availability. She's got a couple of open days, we're working very closely with different organisations. And we're very interested in the space for other exhibitions of various types. I mean, it's very much across community, all sorts of things. And there's two open days that she's organising to bring other people into it. We've got an Instagram account now, thank you very much Dean and his team for sorting that out, as well as a Facebook page. So if you're not following us, then please do, because we're trying to get as many people, especially in Ramsgate, aware as possible. In terms of other sort of practical things like that, all's going according to plan, isn't it councillor Green? So that's really lovely, we've had lots of meetings, it's full on, but it's fun. And then recently we had the meeting where we looked at the design brief from the architect. Now, when we started this whole project proper after Delrenzio's scheme went in, we were in the situation where we needed to iron out a few things. We had this thing that was achieved up to this level, but we hadn't had the groundwork for this done properly and so on and so forth. And over the last few months, what we've done is even it all out, to the point where we are going forward into something like Sage 2, if that means anything to anybody, but it means that we're so much, you know, full steam ahead to the next part. The beautiful thing is of course that we'd already had plans put into TDC's planning department and they've been approved, which means that we've got that authorisation for a few things. And what we did with the architect this time, we've got Neat, gentleman called Gordon, who's excellent, and Neat is his team, is we looked at those plans and were they still viable and up to date? Did we need to change anything? So we gave Neat our criteria for what the council requires. And he managed to simplify them in our favour, which means that precise going to cost us less money, because whether we like it or not, prices of everything is going up, isn't it? And also the different, you know, a new pair of eyes looking at it. He's ironed out some of the things that were really quite difficult for us to deal with and they would have been extremely expensive. They said if you do this, you know, you're killing two birds with one stone and what have you. So if you don't mind, I'm going to stand up there just like a pointer to things, because I thought it might be easier for you to talk you through it while I'm, I've got the phone rings up. So we've got the first...
Can, that's the Nixon. Can I just ask if you're qualified? Hey, you need a blackboard, Robert, throw it in.
So here we have downstairs of Bradford House, and we're going to start with the outside. And Gordon's idea, very simply, again, very cost effective, but very effective in making sure that the place is safe for pedestrians as they come past, but also quite inclusive, is to put a series of bollards around the building so that when people on pavement are walking in front of our space, they must feel like they've entered something, which is nice. They're part of Bradford House as they walk past. Again, very discreetly done, but also the double usage. So for example, the bollards on the side could be bike racks and so on and so forth. So we're trying to maintain an element of practicability about it. And when this will be done, those drop down bollards are there, this will be the entrance to the back area. Now at the moment, that's where the technicians are and it still could be, so that's still in the pipeline, so don't worry about that for the moment. But so traffic itself, cars etcetera etcetera are going to come down the other side. Whereas pedestrians are safe from that traffic through this bollarded area. And the gate would be moved back to allow access to two particular doors. So we have both of these doors. And this one would go into the main hall, which is the one everybody uses now. Sorry, can you see it? Do you see it? If you can't. And the other one, so when you go into the technicians' area, which is here for the moment, isn't it, with that lovely back room? That would be changed into a lobby and that would be sort of like the main entrance for everybody generally. This is where we're putting a platform lift. So we've just saved ourselves a fortune instead of having a lift that might go all the way up to the top of the building, which we don't need. We've got the platform lift that can go up to the next floor and I'll come back and talk you through that in a second. But also what we have here is a space for your arrival and then toilets. Now toilets are important because toilets mean people, the more toilets you have, the more people you accommodate, the more money you can get and so on and so forth. So one of the things that we've really had to do when we've been considering the outline of the building is making sure that we have that facility. So it's slightly changed. The doors that we have at the moment, which are those drop down doors from the front, are going to stay there and be held in the upright position permanently, so that we don't lose that resource and that heritage aspect of the fire station. And then there would be bi-fold doors at the front. So when you need access from the front, you can have it. The door here generally would be used for that downstairs time when somebody needs that space. The rest of the time, like I say, you come in through the lobby. And the lobby is designed so that there'd be information and so on and so forth there. And then to get to the rest of the building, you'd go through our heat bank effectively. This is almost our reception, this is a place for people to wait for other people, you know, when they're coming along. There could be tea and coffee facilities and it would also be where you'd find the manager of the building for want of a better word, taking the water away where somebody was. So this is where you'd come in here. The stairs have been retained without anything in front of them, so that again, we keep that an original feature. And this back area where you've got the back doors is an external catering setup space. If anybody wanted like a wedding venue or some sort of like external catering, they can bring food in from there and so on and so forth with a furniture store. And so this, if you think about it, this is the storage working area for this particular venue space. Because that's obviously going to be the one that's going to be the most used, you can imagine with large rooms. So we have the same toilets and we have a more toilet down there as well. If, for example, you wanted privacy in this area, you don't want anybody coming in or walking through and going up there, which is obviously a problem that we've had to think on, there's two ways of doing it. We've kept the outside stairs at the back so that you can access the floors from a different way. And you can also go through the lift, because it was easier and sheen and more aesthetically pleasing to keep this open as an original feature than it would be to screen a whole lot off, lose some of that space and make people walk in as a layout of the building. So again, when you look at the plans that we've had and the plans that we've got now, this again comes out as easier to do and more cost effective. Any questions on the ground before I go on?
Yes, please.
Yes, go on.
I'm wondering where the, you said the technicians would be based in the backyard, which isn't shown. But will they have a room?
Right, don't worry about the technicians, because the technicians are going to be, no, 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 what I'm saying is, it would be all singing or dancing, they will be looked after, so yes.
They'll have a different building.
Oh yes, totally. I don't want, but we're just, we're just looking at this to pass it. But yes, there's various, various things that can happen to the technicians, but all of them are in their favour again. There's facilities to have three contains out the back, they've got staff and facilities, they've got, you know, toilets and so on and so forth, all looking at other options.
Well, that's not new, is it?
No, because it's temporary, it's temporary structure, thank you very much. So I promise you, the technicians are looked after.
Just from my point of view, it seems like quite a big building with a lot of space.
Right.
And then we, we need to...
Yeah, first of all, you've got to remember, this has to pay for itself, this isn't a freebie. We've got the money to build this as we'd like it. Then we also have to think about how it runs itself, because otherwise we're either putting a crew set up or it wants to let me up if you know what I mean. So this has to create revenue as well as in a community hub manner, as other community hubs do. So what's the most cost effective? Making sure that the technicians are well suited and things are actually better, they'll have better provision than they do here at the moment and being able to sort that out, or trying to shoot holes in something that they're trying to make money out of. So that is the better option, but they will be looked after, I promise you. You know, this isn't all things for men, we can't do everything here, we need to make this work as a venue to make space for me to do. Can I ask you a question?
Thank you. Yeah, two things. Where are the electric vehicle points going?
Again, at the moment, the, we're just looking at the outside space at the back, so they will be out the back. So all of that is sort of like here. And the only reason for this, we're under-nod about whether we should show the extra provision, because it wasn't in the plans to be finalised and actually in the brief of the architect, we decided against it. But I will be coming back to show you those another point.
Okay.
And please ask if you have questions, just as...
The more, the more, what I see may be a problem is the bi-folding doors that you mentioned. That's fine about the rolling doors going up and over, that's not, that's not an issue. But that wasn't part of the listed building consent. Now those bi-folding doors, are they going to be flushed to the front or are they going to be at the back of the, of the front, if you see what I mean? Can I show you?
Yes, I do, I do know what you mean.
Do you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean, we didn't ask for that. We did ask about the doors and we have been told that they're compliant with what's being put through, but I don't, I'd have to...
I would ask, yeah, I would ask our architects to double check with the council.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody write that down, do you want to remind me, because I will ask that of you.
Just wanting to make sure that we're not, that we don't, we don't put them in and they come down and say, you haven't done this and done that, but...
The architect is having conversations with the...
Conservation.
Conservation officer, TDC, about all the changes from the...
They've been kept in the books, so if you're mindful of the answer of the...
That's fine then.
And the bi-fold doors mimic what the building was like, one of its iterations before the...
Bi-fold doors, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying David that the...
And it was a horse, and it was a horse-train, yeah.
Yeah.
They weren't those metal doors, they were...
Yeah, I'm not saying they won't get approved, but I'm saying is that you would need, in my humble opinion, I think listed building consent is required for it.
We have, yes, I have to say that they are in the loop the whole time.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Yeah.
Fine.
When we're talking about the layout, I'm quite impressed, I think it's looking good. I was wondering about the walls inside the room, because as I recall, there's all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, no, it's all, I mean, the whole, the beauty of it is, we're trying to get it back to and clean it up. So anything that's superfluous and not needed, obviously we're keeping the original character of the building and anything that we can salvage originally, but the rest of it would be made good and so on and so... You all right, if I don't answer?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Don't be, don't be surprised at all by the names of this. So basically it's a potentially leasable space and a community area, and I've got my grey hair, but anyway. So, but that's only to show you, yes, we need to make some money out of this, don't we? So one of the things that we can do is that we can rent some rooms for whomever. It could be, it could be any style of person, whether it's a business, you know, artist, community and so on and so forth. But we've done it in colour coding, so that basically it helps us with our business plan to work out what the type of, we've got three grades of finance at the moment, meanwhile uses, how we rent something out, whether it's to a private business or whether it's a community use and so on and so forth. And that helps us with the business plan, because all of meanwhile use at the moment is speaking back into that. So the front on the first floor, we have two spaces that could be leasable. And in there, there's a door leading to this room, so that's another option. And somebody wants, you know, like a, a meet out room, a breakout room or something, you know, then they could lease that too if it's free and so on and so forth. The beauty of this whole building really is it just gives you so many, you know, options to be able to do stuff. These two rooms again could be community space, they're across the corridor from each other, so that you can use them like that. And one of the things that we were particular about was we want to make sure that we have a room that is discreet and comfortable for counselling of any service, so that whether it's Porchlight or the Red Crisis Centre or anybody who wants to rent that from us, they have somewhere where people can access that room without going through the main building and it's a nice room to be in. Okay, so we've chosen that for this particular space. But that's again, as and when people will use it, again, it's available at other times. So if you wanted something that's particularly easy to rent, it's constantly leased out to tenants for however long a period that would be, then these two rooms could be it. And as you come up the stairs or as you come up the lift, you will come into this room, which is, it's a real mess at the minute. It's the kitchen, it's the shower, it's all these sorts of things. When that's cleaned out, it's actually an excellent example of a beautiful old Georgian room. And so we've chosen this room with the fireplace and the layout of it to be that, what's the word before, you know, what's, sorry, I want to call it, that's not what, that's not what I mean. That whole, you know, you can sit down, you can have meetings, you can sit down and have a coffee with some of the...
Socialising.
Socialising, oh, it's just a simple, isn't it, yeah, so informal collaborative space it's got here. And again, you've got a table if you wanted to sit down and, you know, with your laptops or something, a little bit more comfortable. And that would be that area. Now, in question, we've got the same old WC up here, again, to add to our toilet facility, because toilets bring to people. But this at the moment is, it's a toilet, it's the ladies toilet, but the basin is outside. So the architect has put this down as like the IT cupboard. But we've said to add another toilet into the building, if we could, we could effectively, if you think sort of adding a small box onto that dotted line and having the door come out that way, so you're not coming straight out into somebody to have a coffee, you could put the basin here and you could have another proper toilet, because there's always women, it's the issue is that women need toilets. So if you did that, we'd be able to increase our potential footfall and so on and so forth. So that's in discussion at the moment. Anything else on there that you want to talk to me about? Go on.
Sorry.
It's all right, go on.
I'm not quite, I don't quite understand the staircase arrangement. So the dogleg one at the bottom comes up onto a flat roof, does it?
The dogleg one comes up onto, onto an area where you enter, I know that's not very clear when you see it. You basically, you come up...
Yeah, probably outside, up on the...
For that one, the outside one?
Outside into there, I can't remember it off the top of my head, I'm starting to remember exactly what it is.
Is that a bit of flat roof there that you walk across to get to the door to the private room?
It's a flat roof, I mean, it's, we've got a bona fide stair, emergency staircase outside, that's a steel platform, it's all...
So then what's the, the other little staircase on the left? Is that an escape from the top floor?
No, it's internal, internal's clear for us.
This one?
Yeah.
No, the other one.
No, that's internal, you're talking about this, this is basically the external, the external staircase. It's not particularly well shown here, I'll be honest with you. But it's, that's the external staircase into that and these stairs go, go to the top floor.
Yeah, but I still don't understand what the white bit, not covered, between the two stairs.
Basically, if you go, if you go and look at it, it's, it's a steel platform, it's a proper walkway.
Okay, so it's like a flat roof or...
Well, it's a fire escape.
It's a fire escape.
It's a fire escape.
It's a heavy duty, genuine fire escape that you could walk, but now they're not changing you that.
Right, okay.
Go and have a look, Pat.
Hmm.
I'd have had a look.
Okay. If you're asking what I've got from the top floor?
No, fine.
Cheers. So the reason that we only have a lift on the first floor is that you often have the same facility on, on both floors. You know, if there's something on the top floor, you're going to do on the, on the first floor, then you'd need to have a lift on the top floor. But there isn't. Yes, there's potential leasable space where there is downstairs, yes, there's community space where there is downstairs. So we've saved ourselves, there used to be this huge glass of like walkway, which would have cost us a fortune from the lift that was going to be here across. So we've done away with that. So again, we have a community space that's slightly larger, and again, a more discreet area and a possible leasable space. All of these are flexible. There is a door into here, again, you can either the breakout room or something and you could have the whole floor or, or as and when. We've tried to do it where in all of the rooms, we've kept the, the beauty of anything original that we've got. We've kept it very simple, we wanted it to be smart, we wanted it to be IT friendly, so on and so forth. But we also want it to be as flexible as possible, so that we can maximise our income and our offer to the community for whatever they want to use it. And again, that's on a very level of payment or fee, depending on who they are and what they need. So we've got quite, from the, from the original plans, this is quite a light touch that the architect has done from what we've had before. There's a very few things that have been changed, so there's not really anything that we're fighting against or anything like this. This is actually in our favour. So I ask you today for your thoughts on it, with the idea that we go back to them and say, yes, we're happy with this. Any questions?
Sorry?
No, take some.
I recall that room, I thought the ceiling was a bit low, had it been...
It's not that low, it's, I mean, it's beautifully high, you know, the whole, the whole floor's up. It's the other way, you can tell that it's the top floor, but it's not...
It hasn't been lowered, you know what I mean, it hasn't been...
No, 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 not the floor. Go on.
Any toilets planned up there? I've got a mental health toilet already.
We've got a toilet, if we, if we make the IT room into a toilet, it would, it would help us, that there's no toilets planned on that floor.
If we make the IT room into a toilet, what happens with the IT?
The IT luckily, it's smaller now and it can be, it can go anywhere. So it could go, I mean, I thought, you know, why can't we have it sort of like up in this room or, you know, in one of the corridors? And basically you need a lockable cupboard, because IT nowadays, as we all know...
Yes, because it was the size of a lawn dress and now it's this.
Yes, yes, yes. So it's the one thing that we can, we can move.
Right, great.
He hadn't put it as a toilet originally, because he, because the basin's going outside and he wanted to keep the sort of like fabric of that room as, as honourable to the original Georgian room as, as we could. And we said, if there's one thing we compromise on, it's that, we'll have a toilet. So basically, that's the kind of fact of the matter. Any questions? Go on, I'm interested, go on.
I'm sure the architects know what they're doing, but are they 100% certain? You don't need to say with access to the top floor.
Yes, yes, and so does Laura and so all the guys that we're working with, yes.
They've read part of them of the building, right?
Yes. You only need, if there's something you're not able to offer in another part of the, of the building, and there isn't anything up there that we're not offering anywhere else.
Yes, I understand, yeah, fine.
One issue we haven't quite resolved yet is the floor, the ground floor. It's concrete, which is great if you want to drive a vehicle in there, but not so good if you want to do yoga or exercise classes.
You do polished concrete, polished concrete.
It's too hard, they're saying, people are saying it's too hard. But we can always lay a mat or, or something.
It looks as if the price doesn't matter, we also do have another roof that would, I can't remember the name of that one, the next one, the one that was also... But it would be, it would be best to have something that's more like something, you get more use out of it and markets and things coming in and so on and so forth. And possibly you just, like, yoga, I see. So I'm proposing that we go back to the architect and...
Emery, sorry, can I just, I mean, have you thought of, obviously, you know, a wooden floor or is that, would be too expensive, I guess, or...
But for, for what you want to use it for, you want, you want a hard floor.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, wooden floor.
But for a wooden roof, the concrete floor isn't necessarily a problem, we just want to make sure that...
Somewhere there's something.
Yes, so if we have the concrete floor, people are aware there's a concrete floor.
Why would we want a vehicle going in there? Just, I'm, just a question I'm asking.
And when the, when the Dutch exhibition was there, they...
Rosebike.
They came in, they brought in the boat.
Exhibits.
Yeah, they, they drove on it. Stuff like that.
It's silly not to build a...
Yeah, yeah, if we've got that facility, it always seems strange that we'd get rid of it from not having that facility.
Just asking a question.
Thank you very much for your enthusiasm for all this, if you will. It's great. And the, the hard floor, if you're going to have exercise, jazzercise, yoga, you just encourage your clients to bring a thick padded mat, don't you?
Actress.
Yes, because it must be fortunate to change.
Yes.
The concrete floor to, yes, anything, yes, to set vehicles, the concrete floor.
We have, there is an email there, and I'll, I'll look at, there is, where somebody's looking into the price of like a large softer mat floor, those sorts of things. So that's something that could be bought and stored.
They have them at leisure centres, don't they?
Exactly, yes, yeah. And Susie was aware of that, because she was the one that wanted to bag it up. Go on.
How is it heated?
That's not in this, it's going, the heating engineers are looking at this, because they need to get this information to be able to work out the best heating structure, so that's next.
Right, so they could have underfloor heating on, on the ground floor?
It depends on what's the most effective and also what's within our budget. So, so, so let's go on to the budget very briefly, so that people are aware. So we have a set budget that we are going to do this renovation with. There's obviously a margin of movement, but anything above or beyond that, again, sort of like eats into our funding. Now, don't forget that this is just the renovation of the building, this is not necessarily the outside element. And also with regards to fitting it out with stuff, we still need to find that market, which is again, while the meanwhile use, one of the things that's been starting to improve money. One to be able to think, right, we've got all the money, but we need to start to think about how we can buy, take it as a chance of practice or stuff like that. But also with regards to marketing, because we want to make, like I say, we want to make this pay its way. It doesn't need to make a profit, it does, it doesn't need to be in debt though, you know, so that's the type of stuff. So with regards to the heating and all of those things, we've got a wish list of things that we'd like and then we've got our budget and then we work accordingly with what we can do as a council. And then David and I would always bring that back for, for, obviously, but, but we have to see what the heating engineers come back to us with and what we have to compromise on, but that isn't in this design.
Is there a sort of business plan of, you know, what the rates are, what part figure for the utilities etcetera, and what we've got to charge per square foot?
Yes, yes, all of that is out. All of, absolutely, of course we have, yes. Standard Heritage, who are working with us, we've got APE consultants, who are basically project managing the whole thing and so on and so forth, work very strongly with Standard Heritage, who are looking at the heritage aspect of it, of course, plus what that means with regards to the heating and blah, 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 blah. Who are looking at the heritage aspect of it, of course, plus what that means with regards to the heating and blah, 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 blah. And they're also doing the business plan for us, which we've had the first draft of. That business plan helped us think about the things that we needed to do for Gordon for this. And then Susie Humphries' work with Meanwhile Use feeds into that business plan. And again, all the information that she gets, because basically what she's doing is an information gathering exercise. So it's, it's not a case of everything that she does has to be perfect and right. What she's doing is like, these are all through tariffs, you know, and, and finding out if it's right, whether it's suitable, whether it's in conjunction with what other people in the, in the area are doing and so on and so forth. So there's a constant ongoing exercise of that information that you've just suggested. And we update it weekly. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes. I'm going to ask, I love the fact you're asking questions because I'm going to obviously spend, I'm immersed in this all the time. And I don't want you to be left out of the loop at all. So please do ask, but it's going, it's good.
I just need to make one more comment, Anne-Marie, if I may. I think what we mustn't lose sight of was when, was when Radford House, Radford House was bought off the fire brigade, the fire brigade as part of the sale, which you're probably aware of, says you can't run businesses from.
No, see.
We're down, we're down to talk about the profit.
Yes.
So as long, I, I mean, for me, as long as it pays its way.
Yes.
Then, then that's fine. But I think much, I'm just saying that we need to be mindful of the, of the actual sale of.
It's actually, it's not actually that though. It's very interesting because we were told that originally, it isn't. If you look at what it is, it was a case of like, we can't rent out with regards to anything sort of like coming back to us for the building and so on and so forth. So it's not just profit. It's a case of like, you know, we can come out to the comfort in and they can do what they like to them. You know, that's, it's not that. So we can rent it out and we can profit from those things. All of it gets ploughed back into the community hub.
Yeah.
Is, is, you know, where we, where we can do that.
That's good, Dan.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for.
Oh, pleasure.
Indeed.
Thanks to you two for your work and to the, all the after. It looks really exciting.
It's full on, I have to say, but it, it's very exciting. Go on.
I'm just wondering about the alarms. What sort of safety will we have? You know, what sort of burglar and all that sort of thing.
That, that's being dealt with at the moment. In fact, we're dealing with it with regards to our tenants now and all of that. We're, we're dealing with locks, we're dealing with alarms, we're dealing with access security, all of that. But of course, within the building itself, when it's done, that will be part and parcel of it.
Yes.
And our meanwhile use at the moment is informing us constantly of what we need to do. So again, like Susie, you know, Susie, Maxine, David, all myself, you know, the, the, the boys at Ding, they're always passing information on, you know, we need this, do we need this? Will that affect that and so on and so forth? So, so it's, it's a really good learning curve and, and information facilitator.
Yeah, people are.
Yes.
They notice things that people outside wouldn't see.
Yes, so all of that is being discussed and, and being done. So every time you go into Radford House, you'll notice all the little changes, but things are happening. I suppose that we pass this. Do I have a second now? Cheers, thank you. Anything else you, you wanted to talk?
No, no.
Go on.
If I could just say something about the technicians. Laura has commissioned the architect to look at a number of options for how they could accommodate it. Working initially with Chris, but since his hospitalisation with Maxine and, and the rest of the technicians. Expect a report from him in the next week or so.
That's good.
They are priority in what we do here, they really are.
Will there be a manager for this?
Yes.
And, and where would they go?
I said at the beginning, do you remember the heat bank lobby area? I did say that the manager would be there if you needed to see somebody, they'd be there. Right.
Okay, members, the proposal is to approve the proposed layout contained within the response to the agreed brief revision two dated February 2023 for research and development. Okay, with that, all in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried. But again, I didn't notice anybody.
I just want to say that the way that he sent us this was rather lovely. And I wish the planning applications we got in was clear.
Yes.